We're gonna go ahead and start our regular, well, I guess we rescheduled this meet, our regular October meeting. Uh, we'll start with, uh, welcoming everyone, thank everyone for coming and everyone that, uh, watching on, uh, online. We'll open with our prayer, follow our pledge, uh, Mr. Walker, would you mind coming up and lead us?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Golden?
Here.
Mr. Lau?
Here.
Mr. McKinnney?
Here.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Ray?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Woods?
Well, I did speak to Mr. Woods over the weekend, he had adopted the point that rescheduled and he wasn't able to, uh, sorry. Doc's appointed, he wasn't able to reschedule in Jackson, and he said that he could get back in time with the board, but not as far as he was. But I did speak with him over the gentleman's stuff. Uh, so move on to approval of minutes, we have our regular scheduled council meeting minutes from September the eleventh. Everyone has looked over there, there is not any changes, corrections of each, those minutes, does that motion make their point as well? I have a motion on the slate, and if you would cash your votes. Most approved. This good. It might be a layer in the man's seat right there, the layer number one, we'll figure it out for you. All right, uh, under my report, I will invite everyone out to, uh, uh, brand presentation from Tennessee Howland, uh, um, I already say October the nineteenth at noon. So if anybody is available, I would love you guys to come out and, uh, for that presentation, October, and we'll be here October the nineteenth at noon. Um, barbecue blowout, or this is the third barbecue blowout, uh, October twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, last weekend of this month. I'm excited, we've got a lot of, uh, big things planned for that, uh, a lot of, um, music groups and pro teams and backyard teams. This year we, um, uh, throughout tourism, department will be adding, and some of the concerts will be added at Carnival. A, like you say, fair, just a Carnival, uh, there on the learning space, so for, uh, family activities. Um, as well as a normal, although presentation, and then also invite you guys out to lunch, and I think, well, you got an invitation here. We host our mayor's, mayor's luncheon at noon on the twenty-seventh, that Friday. Um, till to the park will be doing that barbecue for the luncheon, so. Come out, we're looking forward to having a, the weekend that, that week, um, on October twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth. Uh, offices of the city will be closed November tenth, um, and German's event on those day. And, um, a couple other things I have, um, if you're not doing our last meeting, we had, uh, Mr. Williams talking about, uh, Mr. Long Williams, um, talk to us about, uh, Martin Street, uh, redigning at the William Street, I've been working on that, and we, uh, hadn't found out much more information, um, other than what the D's say, I'm waiting to hear, I'm trying to go through some more minutes and stuff. I'm trying to get back with the D's office, pressure the D's office to see some more information before we took any action or anything on that. But I, um, I did, I was, I forgot to call him last week, but I did, we did talk earlier, I let him know what was going on, but I just wanted to let y'all know that as well. So hopefully I'll come back, um, with something next month, uh, on that. And I'll just say, I haven't really found much more than what we was looking at last time, um, so. Sort of hard to say why people did what they did thirty, forty years ago, um, I guess we'll be hoping that, but, so. We'll be going back and everything that, that, coming back and visiting that next month. Um, that's all of my report, uh, also, I was gonna, as I saw, um, my post coming in, but he signed up on the, on the, uh, public comments section, but we'll, I'll have on my report and, uh, give him the floor here, if he had anything he wanted to present to us, to speak to us, to talk to us about, so. Uh, what's the post coming with?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, good evening, Councilor, good evening, good to be here, all right here. I just wanted to invite you all, of course, Mayor McTisick has talked about it for the barbecue blowout, but our bicentennial, of course. Um, and there's items in the courthouse right now, it was in the time capsule, um, they took the covers off today, and we've had a lot of people come through there to see what was salvageable, uh, from the time capsule. So that's in the courthouse lobbies, so y'all please come by, I'll let everybody know to see those items. But I wanted to personally invite y'all, and we're having our bicentennial celebration on that Saturday at eleven o'clock. So we're gonna have, um, a proclamation, and we'll have different mayors, um, uh, different representatives coming in, so. That's gonna be at eleven o'clock, uh, at the courthouse, and there'll be other activities around on the other side as well, so. But Mayor, I'm gonna give you this, it's a personal invitation, and for you and the, the council to be all right?
And money in that car?
Well. Check. But I didn't get y'all, these, these are commemorative coins, and I'm, uh, we had made up.
Is this on the twenty-eighth?
Yes, sir.
On the twenty-eighth, uh, that's seven months.
Oh, thank you, sir. Thank you very much. But y'all are welcome, and please come if you can.
Thank you so much, Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, put that on the calendar, and we'll send out, uh, invite to the round of, uh, any other known folks coming through. Uh, so moving on to stand, the little reports on the, under the, uh, electric department, the BEA board met on September twenty-fifth, uh, through the purchase of the one sixty-one twenty-five transport, the person of one sixty-one, bring her, uh, silicone lash with the cover of the cost of both items, and a purchase of forty-one foot length truck, uh, from Altech to be used for the fiber work, and BEA will be able to, uh, convert it to food and stuff. That's all on BEA, utilities, uh, Mr. Walker.
Good evening, Councilor, Mayor.
Good evening, how are you?
Uh, the utility board met, uh, last Wednesday, October four, and, uh, we discussed, we had two bleach tanks at the water, water plant had to be replaced. We've got those in processing plant, and our, uh, USG, which is our tank inspection people, they came and did ROB over clearwets. And, uh, they're gonna get back and get with Bobby, the operator, and myself, and we're gonna discuss about draining those and doing the repairs as needed. And the gas prices for the month is sixty-five cents, all I have for the board this month.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Thank you.
Next hour to front.
Good evening, good evening, Mr. Parker, uh, my report, uh, total fire calls had twenty-two, had sixteen of them within the city, sixteen in county. Uh, fire service training hour was two forty-seven, smoking on install fifteen, fire code inspection fifteen, per replacement event was seven.
Thank you, Parker. I noticed that we were doing some hiring, are we losing another five hundred cents?
Yes, we are. Uh, Cal is, is from the Jackson.
How many will be short now?
Uh, gonna be one with Cali, right now we not short, we be short, we can wear Cali, we be short.
Awesome, okay.
Thank you.
On the command chief on the advert sleeve, uh, festival that they did, Saturday, real good turnout, a lot of people coming out, and just a good job today.
Thank you.
Um, before, call chief, I, uh, John, when you keep coming, it ain't gonna be long, I, I feel I mentioned this on my, uh, report, um, we have one, two, three units out on this building, I, I don't know what it is, that's, we keep a unit out on this building, um, just to let y'all know next month will be coming up. Uh, we got two that we're gonna replace, it's not gonna be them out, but the one that's in the offices over here, the heat is out on that, and that'll probably be, uh, I think we put twenty thousand in our budget for air unit repairs, and I'm pretty sure that one is gonna wipe the whole plan out. And that, this'll keep the cycle going, that since I've been on city council, we replace the units every year on this building, so, uh, but I was just, I had a same chief, but we're, we're gonna be getting the one that the fire department fits, um, and then we'll put out a B in for fixing those myself. Hopefully they won't get too covered in oil. All right, uh, chief John?
Uh, good evening, everyone. My report is as follows, we've had seven hundred and fifteen council services, two hundred and twenty-eight citations, nineteen incidents, two of those were injuries, zero fatalities, the other seventeen are property damage, twenty-eight arrests, eleven of the arrests were juveniles, seventeen adults. We had special events, we did a homecoming, retaliating, and we also did two, two DGL situations, and we had a hundred and fifty-five hours of training. Also like to add that this coming Thursday, okay, sir?
Nineteenth?
Nineteenth of July, uh, nine one's gonna have a meeting at CJC, we're gonna discuss how we're billing everybody, for all the cities to know. So if somebody wants to come, find out about the building, we're inviting all police, fire chiefs, mayor, and a representative for every city to be there. Also, next Monday, we are having our swearing in at ten thirty here for the police department, this morning, new officers and promotions. It will be at ten thirty, right after that, we'll convene for dinner, right now we're looking at hamburger station, so we can have lunch with us, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Parks and Rec, full.
Leading the man, council, maybe. Parks and Rec Department reports on following, youth soccer league is running smoothly, and it will end this Thursday, uh, at the city park. The adult, uh, line dance exercise class, that's, uh, sponsored by Total Transformation, it continues on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and they, uh, I mentioned last month that they have reached a two-year milestone, and they'll be celebrating, uh, that milestone, I believe, on the twenty-first, uh, this month. Registration for the cornhole tournament, uh, that's held during the barbecue blowout that Parks and Rec assists with. We've been taking registration, we have about seven teams already registered for that, and we're looking forward to that. The adult men's basketball league, uh, registration is going on, and it will run through the first of November. And lastly, our volleyball league registration, uh, scheduled to end the eighteenth, but we're running through the rest of this week. Uh, we've reduced the team registration fee to one hundred dollars, uh, to get bill that league back up, and as of now, we're looking at maybe having ten teams in that league, so it'll be a good league this year.
Good. My little, my little board, next Christmas celebration.
We've been working on the Christmas decorations and stuff, and this month it's bought you out a pick-up, it's the last one for the year.
Uh, I was trying to let everybody know, you saw, you know, started Christmas decorations, they got a whole wide, we put up this year, so, it's starting early.
Hey, Caroline, you got two more weeks.
Put it out, he did it out. Good evening, y'all, uh, my report's very short, uh, about ten building consultations, and no building permits written. Two building inspections, two plumbing inspections, no mechanical, about twenty courtesy numbers issued, and a bunch of weapons made out, and so we will be having this, we're gonna be here.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Uh, yeah, a lot of the report was just, was the six today, uh, tourism, uh, Mr. Hill.
Good evening, Council, uh, report kinda stays the same right there at the beginning, still working on Christmas, getting everything lined up. Uh, we have gotten some, um, names for some concerts lined up for the Christmas festival, we're gonna have concerts each night. Uh, talked with Ken today, we've got Bird Williams and, uh, Kitty Jerry, were two names that he gave me, Todd Tillman, who won season eighteen of The Voice, uh, will be coming, we're using our Hardman County's Got Talent winners, uh, for one of our concerts one of the nights. The Hardman County Black History Choir will be doing a concert one night, so that's shaping up to be a really good, uh, event all the way around, as far as music and activities for the kids and, uh, things for adults to do, so we're excited about that. Uh, the marketing should be rolling out soon, we worked on, uh, some advertising, the commerc-, uh, WBBJ came down and did the commercial filming last weekend, so we're excited about how that's gonna turn out, and what we're gonna see there. Um, of course, I attended the ceremonial signing of the Brownfield Initiative by Governor Leah Louise, as well as the Governor's Conference in Chattanooga. And I participated in, on a panel for four H, uh, about entrepreneurship, uh, with, uh, some students from area counties, and that was a very interesting, uh, panel to be on with other entrepreneurs, and from my perspective in getting to work with them, and some of the ideas that we've got, and how we're gonna be helping them, uh, come to, in the future when that building gets ready, so we're excited about that. Uh, one note on the carnival coming up, I know it's a frequent question, how much is it gonna cost? Uh, the carnival company is doing twenty-five dollar wristbands. Um, I believe that the mayor is gonna do vouchers, uh, maybe some, uh, coupons for Baller Elementary, um, for Friday night, five dollars off, so that'll be twenty dollars, twenty, twenty dollar wristbands for Friday night for Baller Elementary students. And then, uh, they also have individual tickets that you can buy, individual tickets are a dollar fifty a piece, and you can ride the rides for X number of tickets. So that's how that'll work.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. All right, that concludes, concludes standing here's reports, uh, on old business versus discussion of the library employees severance. Uh, what we do, I'm, I'm, just wanna bring this back to you guys, it doesn't go with a courtesy than anything, we, uh, we actually passed, um, our minimum wage for city employees, I think it was in twenty-one to fifteen dollars an hour. Y'all know the split with the lottery, we couldn't pay them until the lottery, I mean, until the county approved their portion. Um, two years later, they filed a kind of approval, and, um, my post, they got it passed at their, um, at their meeting, um, last month. We've al-, we've already approved it on our end, but I wanted to let y'all know that we're gonna have a, um, budget limit at the end of the year, that will have this amount in it, I don't know for sure, we, we said, when we, I guess for the good people, when we do our budget limits, we always do them at the end of the year with all of them total up, so we're gonna have to do this two or three different times. But I wanted to let y'all know that we'll be moving them up to fifteen dollars an hour, uh, with the rest of our employees, uh, thanks to, uh, thanks to my post getting that part taken care of on the county. We also, man, I've been discussing things on how we can get better understanding of this, uh, agreement between the city and county with the library and the city. I mean, the county is, it's complicated, for whatever reason, the county owns fifty-two percent, the city owns forty-eight percent, but all the employees, all the payroll, all the day-to-day operations come through the city, even though the county owns more of, uh, that, so we, we're just, we in him, uh, we took a ride around and talked about, about how, on how we can sort of clean some of that stuff up, but, um, that's, basically just wanted to let y'all know that. I don't necessarily, I don't need an approval as much as I just wanted to let y'all know that we are gonna put them up to that amount, just because we, we approved it, but I, you know, it's two years later, and I just wanted to let y'all know.
Sound good?
Um.
If we have an amount?
Uh, well, there are, those are going to be fifteen, so we're looking, probably gonna be around eleven, something like that, I don't know for sure, till we get payroll and stuff done, but we'll have that amount when we do our budget limit.
Hey, Julian, so I looked at your boards, you're going up to fifteen, but Jessica's going up to twenty, correct?
Uh-huh.
Right on.
Yeah, as of the day. Anything else? All right, um, old health department building, give y'all a history lesson on that, uh, we, the city, that, that whole block down there, the old jail, the, uh, old training facility, what we call it, the training facility now, health department, loads of officials building, I think that's all the buildings, I don't think I missed any, I don't think, I think that's all of them.
Dennis office.
Uh, Dennis office, the city owns that property down there. The county was using the, had a health department, and the way the deed was rolled up, in the, the same way with the jail, and it ceased to be a jail, and it ceased to be a har-, a health department, that that property was reverted back to the city. Uh, the health department, uh, has now reverted back to the city, Todd was very excited to come bring that deed to me. So we have that property, and I would say, uh, we have zero use for the building, it's, it's, it's gonna take some work to get it done, um, and it's a lot of building. And we was looking at, what I was proposing was fixing up, from, using it for storage, uh, but I did, man, Casey, uh, Swift from, uh, Ro-, uh, Hardman County, uh, Rose, so I do come down, Casey, uh, we talked, he needs some office space and some other things, and he looked at it and just saying that they could do some use, put some use to it. They have, uh, uh, found that they could fix that property up, and we, I know it needs a new roof, it's probably two hundred thousand miles long.
I don't know if we're that far.
Well, it's gonna need a new roof on it, I don't know how much it costs, but I wanted to bring, uh, let Casey come and tell you what he wanted to do with it, and I'm asking, I'm gonna ask you guys to write for approval to give this building to the, uh, highway department, and we, we, uh, left our, our attorney and their attorney work up the legal, you know, documents and all that stuff. And I just, I asked Casey that he would include storage, if he includes some stores for us at the city to have, to use, to put Christmas decorations and just whole bunch of stuff we need stored, for a fire department, for, I mean, everybody, we just got stuff scattered everywhere, so, uh, Casey, I'll just let you down the floor and just, you know, what's your point about that?
Thank you, good evening, uh, the, uh, this initially just started out as like a storage thing, kinda, we were talking about building a, an office building up by the old armory building that we fixed up, uh, but after about a million something dollars, we figured we're gonna have to postpone that for a while. But we looked at the old Man Chevrolet building, kinda talked to a buddy about it, he was kinda posing, maybe getting rid of it and stuff, but me and Jimmy got talking one day, and I said, hey, man, we're, I just want my office space, and I said, I need some office space and some storage, 'cause we're running out of storage room. We, we turned the old armory into a shop, well, we have a little storage up there, but I hate seeing old buildings sitting to waste, I'd rather see them, something done with them and revamped and revitalized and actually used for something. So I got with my board, we met down there on the third after one of our meetings, and we decided that if city council's willing to give it to, back to the county again, that we would, uh, fix it up, and yes, we talked about maybe having a little spot set aside for, uh, storage for the city, I think. I would've been asking about some storage made for the county to possibly get storage stuff out of the, the bottom of the courthouse. Uh, there's a lot of stuff in that building already, but I think if, if you guys are willing to do it, we're gonna do an abatement on it, get that abatement done to it, and kinda remove the, like, the asbestos tile that's in the floor, and put a new roof on it, and fix the flooding issue. But, um, I think there was a little building out back, is that, is that the Dennis office?
Dennis office, yeah.
We were talking about kinda making that a square, and coming up behind the old Sheriff Park building, if you guys let us, and kinda fix that parking lot up, maybe have a big parking area for city, county, anybody, but we're just looking for, like, an office space, I'm just trying to get some more office space, something a little nicer than what we got, and kinda turn that, use our bill, done that for the employees and stuff. That's where we're at on that, I, my board approved to go ahead, if you guys are through to, to take it, and to, we'll put money into it, but we'll do whatever you guys wanna do, as far as the law, but if you give us that big parking lot, I told him, I said, we can pave county stuff, as long as it's in the county name, so that's why we were like, a big area, I can pave that, make a nice big parking lot. I think y'all were talking about doing a fence at some point around the session, but I think we're holding off till we decide.
Yeah, so what, uh, yeah, I think we let we apply for that grant last month, when was the last one that we did that, a little, uh, week, so what we will do, um, if we move forward, is coincide our fence with, coincide our fence with where he's putting that property, um, so it's just be nice down there, uh, fix that all up, and we can join, use that parking lot to build there and storage and all that stuff, so.
Yeah, I spoke with Chip Perry, I've been speaking on that a couple times on it, but he said, if you do this, basically what you did with the, the last time, just do it to the county, deed it to the county, and if we ever stop using it, it goes back, revert back to city, we're fine with that, or if y'all wanna just, do it in the county, however y'all wanna do it, we're fine with it, my board is good with all of that. But, uh, we just wanna see it put to use, and maybe move forward and sometime try and tear down the Sheriff's Park building for you guys or something for the rubble, so we'll talk about that.
Yeah, we mentioned, I, I've, uh, I've, I really want to do something else there, uh, but once you go in, it's, I mean, it's probably other than stores, I mean, we'll, we'll look at it, it's, it will, it's almost impossible to make anything happen, 'cause the, the walls are walls, the bars are bars, and they don't remodel it, and so, 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 I guess, and reinforced concrete and steel, and it's gonna take, it's gonna take some big machinery to get it down, uh, but that's, that'll be something I think we'll look at moving forward to in the next steps, but just, this'll be starting. My suggestion would be us approving a building, we clean it, and putting those, uh, things in there, I would like to deed it to them, I didn't want to do a lease, I'd rather deed it to them and they have it, 'cause they gonna spend it, they gonna spend a lot of money to fix up, and they don't have it, and then in the event that, they, if they cease to use it, they, they'll, they'll come back to us, um, so. That's mine, too.
I make a motion, will you approve?
I second. I'm also, this will be the second one, this is a goal, you know?
With that, uh, choosing with that old Dennis office, would that be, if we fix that up first, would that be enough stores for you guys?
Yeah.
That way you have your key to it.
Uh, everybody, motion period, so let me tell you on, on that, um, I, I haven't heard, but I want y'all to remember, we had a lease with Hardman County Water Builders on that, and I haven't talked to them to know exactly what's going on, they did some remodeling in there, and it's just, they haven't done anything in years, I know of them, and if they're not gonna use it, well, I say that if they're not, they're not using it, 'cause I know of them, and that building would be perfect to fix for stores and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, we'll, we'll fix it, we'll fix it all up, and then we'll just have it all, that way I can have it all, and if you want to keep just for that building, I mean, that, that way you have control over that one building.
Yeah.
That's fine, I mean, I mean, that's not a problem.
Well, I'll give it with them to check on their status, but I, I probably will find.
Yeah, and if we, if we do the abatement on that, probably need to, you know, find some place to kinda put, move that stuff that's in there for the meantime, that's what I'm saying, if we fix that and get it done first.
Yeah, the stuff in the back, I was gonna, Tyler, if you, I'll talk to him, I'll, all the stuff that's in the building now, some of the county's old records and stuff, and I was gonna give it to him, and it's not a lot of stuff, so I'll, it will all go into the dump, but I would like to.
Where do you think those are?
That's why some, a lot of that stuff we can't, if it works enough, but it's already in county paperwork, and I said it a lot, and I don't have the liability, so. I'll give it, I'll give it to county mayor on that deal, too.
Uh, go for something, thank y'all.
Uh, that's all on old business, under the new business revolution twenty twenty-three zero sixteen, uh, rate authorization to submit applications to the TDC, or community, community development site development, right, program. Um, what this is, uh, is a grant that, we, we've gotten this grant, grant before, a couple times actually, but we just closed our last, last site development that we did. The last site development, right, we did with the county to do phase one environmental stuff on the county industrial park, so that's closed, and never applying for this, and what this is for is a grant, the total of nine hundred, uh, nine hundred and seven, two thousand, four hundred and six dollars, um, and our match of that is two point five percent, which will total twenty-four thousand, three ten, and fifteen cents. And what's, what this is for, if you guys are familiar with our industrial park, the front side of it is certified, it's like fifteen acres we got available there. Um, all these industries that's looking to move there, one fifty-plus acres, and we don't have that available, so. What, the back, the back portion of our industrial park, once you get over past the, um, concrete plant, it's hard to explain if you're not.
But the back portion of our industrial park, once you get over past the, um, concrete plant, it's hard to explain if you're not familiar with that area. I'll, I'll try to find them out, but what this will do will build an access road to the back, which will open up about 50 to 60 acres of land on the back of our industrial park that we can use to recruit and, um, potentially have, um, uh, industry there. So, um, you know, looking, I think sewer's all, sewer's already back there. Sewer's back there. We'll just have to run the, uh, electric, if, you know, utility before. The most expensive utility, which is sewer, is already there. And if we don't have an access road, we just got about 50 acres back there that we can't really do with it. And it's been, we've had it there for years and, you know, just have a, get to the point where we can do something like this would be huge for us. Um, so, we're applying for the grant Southwest is doing the, uh, grant administration on it, but I'll just need approval. This was not, this is not budget, so if we get this grant, uh, well, this will be part of our fund balance. Um, and if we don't get it, you know, it costs a lot. If we get the grant, it'll come from our fund balance of 24,000, which will be to get 900,000 worth of work, almost been 25,000. Is there any questions on this resolution?
I'll make a motion with your group. Just a second.
All right, have a motion, uh, second, most by Mr. Gray, second by Mr. Woods. We'll cast your votes. Most of them came. All right, uh, that's all I, we have tonight. Uh, our motion was adjourned. Most by Mr. Ken and the sun.